All right, I'm, I'm not in that frame, am I?
We're live. But yes.
It's almost like it's never supposed to be. Angles away. I always tell my, like, make sure I'm cut out of that. Don't get like, like, the side of me reading or doing whatever I'm doing.
All right, six o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. Is there approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving this consent agenda?
Aye.
Unopposed? Sounds good. Um, report from the administration, the construction update.
All right, we have quite a bit of information about what's going on over Innovation Campus. Um, recently continuing work, planned for upcoming work. Um, kind of highlights right now on the rip racks that we talked about last time. They've completed, uh, like concrete curving, concrete work, um, electric being ran and, um, starting to work on some of the roofing, um, preparation. So lots of things going on over there. And next week they'll have a shutdown and then they do some paving on the main driveway. So we're going up that direction of all the areas where you won't be able to go up from the sixty-one entrance. Those are going up, start up. And any questions? Or try two together?
Yeah, I have a question. It has nothing to do with the concrete work. Those items in that parking lot? Are there, why do you bring some trees in there?
There will be some greenery and we have some, um, some of that somewhere. And I don't know, I can't tell you off the top of my head where, but yes, there will be some greenery up there.
Yes.
Green spaces.
You know, tree, how they're actually.
Uh, this has nothing to do with, um, construction, but I was in the high school today and I just wanted you guys to know that the custodians are doing a fantastic job. Uh, I had an old AD that wanted to have a tour and, um, he was like, "Blimey, this, this building is beautiful."
All right, the cru- the cru- there's going to get done. We just recognized that custodian, the last home football game, first MVP, most, uh, entire award. And she's doing a great job and she's got, uh, got a good staff on board.
They do.
All right, the next thing on the agenda are parent-teacher conferences.
All right, in the packet you'll just see a, a schedule of when we will be conducting those. These schools have their own times. And just as a reminder, they try, um, to work and get seven and a half hours in, um, throughout the evening hours during that last week in October. And therefore we'll be off on the thirty-first. Um, just a shout out, our teachers do a fantastic job, our entire staff does. And if parents' schedules don't work within these times, they're great about meeting them on craft, calling them, zooming in, um, and being creative of ways to meet and, and work with those teachers to, uh, to help with those families to make sure that they are able to communicate about their child's, um, progress and go from there. So happy to intervene, any questions, do my best, but that's just kind of our standard, uh, procedures.
Any questions? All right, the next thing on the agenda is the building school improvement plan reports.
Yeah, these are things that, um, some of us work with our building principals on. Since they've identified areas we just, or test scores, ADR, each building, and they work on areas to improve upon as goals for the year. And those are just there to look after your students and read through and see the things that this building's working on. That's based on areas that we've identified and need to improve upon in each building.
I have a question. Sorry, I apologize for having the phone because I get very tired. Um, with the schools combined and I know the test schools have come and stopped in some areas, are there Title I teachers in every, um, every school?
Oh, yes.
Um, with Oakwood, I thought they were supposed to have two Title I teachers? Um, and that, that got scrapped or something with their, you know, scores because of the transition. Are we looking at getting any extra, um, help in that area?
I don't know. But really, you still have the best type of teachers.
Um, are they able to serve all the students that need that?
A part of them, not everything.
Our, our Title I typically focus on our K-two students with that early intervention piece, um, which does allow them to serve a larger population versus.
Okay. So, I mean, my question is especially with, you know, the case transitioning that had title services before. Will they get those same title services or no?
They should be, yes.
Okay.
Cause it seems like their previous end of year numbers and their beginning, like, there's a huge discrepancy. I think, like, Veterans is the only other one I saw that had the previous. For the reading? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
To see if there's any need for extra educators, Title I educators in those of those students.
Yeah, those are the only things we're looking at. We look at those every year and see what the needs are and put them around.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, the next thing on the agenda are the meeting dates. The next regular Board of Education, November nineteenth at six at the middle school. And then the MSBA annual conference, this is next week in Kansas City. Anybody's going?
I'm going to the delegate.
I mean. Okay.
Still have a report for that.
Do we have to approve those? I'm sorry, the building improvement?
No, no, it's just for you guys.
Okay, sorry.
All right, the next thing is old business, the Eugene Fields, um, bids.
Hey, we did advertise for bids and we received four bids for the purchase of Eugene Field Elementary. Um, went through, looked at those. We had, um, information from the, the recommended bid, um, sitting here, our acceptance, uh, from the Mission One Eighty, uh, Compassion Church, uh, had a bid of thirty thousand dollars. That's a bid we recommend that you go forward with. And just to give you a little bit of a overview of what they submitted as their information, um, I, I believe they hope to be a hub for services for foster care, for Toyota Kill, for some other, um, stu- or aged adults that are aging out of foster care and provide just some mission work and just a resource and a, and a hub. So something very huge of that building, um, and, and, uh, we would recommend that we move, that you accept that motion. Or any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. All the land goes with that as well, right?
All parcels were designated as one, say, or three different parcels that fell within the ground there and they're ongoing with that.
I mean, if we accept that bid?
A second.
We need a minute.
If we can have that specific motion.
We want to read that. In, in the board packet, that, if you read the specific motion, please.
You want me to read the case?
It's right, it's right before, there you go.
Here it is. Accept bid number three from Mission One Eighty EVA Compassion Church for the purchase of Eugene Field Elementary School and to delegate authority to Ted Sampson, Chief Operations Officer and/or Richie Crack Superintendent to execute the sales contract, complete all necessary documentation and perform all actions required to close the sale on behalf of the district.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, I was about to say, anybody opposed? Motion carries? That's great, thank you.
Yeah, one more, uh, bid I would view to deal. This was advertised, I had a staff member inquire about purchasing the bench that was located in the front yard that had Eugene Field on it. So we put that out for bid and advertised it on the website. I would receive one bid, the amount of a hundred dollars, and that was from Lori Fletcher. Uh, and the recommendation would be to accept that bid.
I'm having a lot of trouble understanding you.
All right, the recommendation would be to accept a bid from Lori Fletcher for one hundred dollars to purchase the Eugene Field bench that is in the front yard.
I'll make that motion.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, opposed? Perfect. Um, new business, approve the A-plus agreement.
Yeah, there's no changes in my experience, something I can remember, it's a pretty serious case, isn't it? I think this said, we need to read off, mostly that question, approve the A-plus.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the A-plus agreement also. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the bus routes.
All right, we have the bus routes for this fall in the packet and we request a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the twenty-five, twenty-six school bus routes. Second.
Any discussion?
Um, I, I have some concerns. Uh, there's still some students that aren't getting picked up till four o'clock and I have concerns about that. Um, so what can we do with these bus routes to alleviate that?
Any more drivers?
Good point.
Any more drivers? That's, that's the problem. I think we're down a couple still.
Down a couple, we've actually, two retired drivers. We've got one approved for critical shortage. We've got another that they've requested that through the retirement system. We have two sub-drivers currently who are out from driving for surgery. Um, I think Andrea and I have both been about fifteen to twenty times so far this fall. About having to cut too many. Uh, Scott's actually evaluating right now on one of our special bus routes. He says we're getting pretty bold to meeting another person. So we do have that, we always keep a bus driver position open because we're almost always short at least one or two. Um, so we are evaluating that to see if we can get another one filled. Need bodies, need, need mobilized individual.
Oakwood and Skoll. Skoll's gotten better, but they're still the last.
It's, it's the same bus, it's the same bus, like buses going around, picking kids. It goes from one elementary to the other. And I think you come around and go, that's why they're lax on vehicles.
It's just, just being a real stretch of those, those, um, ED teachers to, sped teachers to, you know, have those keys there that way.
Yeah, it's, it's not.
And most of those routes are door to door as opposed to a bus stop. So those take longer as far as being able to deliver and, and get kids at home.
So if we get a second sped driver, then?
If we can get another driver, we have enough to, to justify that on the routes and then we don't take them at time.
Probably not only door to door, but you got to make sure somebody's home.
Yeah, the way sometimes you.
So they'll have to wait till for somebody to come out.
The bus, the safety code goes and knocks on the door and. And just specifically helping students, you know, on and off sometimes as well.
And it takes those students a while to get home by us, off your bus, it just goes a lot slower. Not just drop them off, but pick them up in the buildings. We help speed it up a little bit because the, the buildings can watch the, um, transport, the maps. They know where the bus is, so when they see the bus get close, they get the kids outside, get ready to get on the bus. So they, they can see when the bus gets close quickly, that's something a little bit, um, but yeah, it's a, it's an issue.
You know, the teachers compensated if they have to stay till four?
Yes, we've actually, as a fair professionals, we've shifted the schedule a little bit. They come in a little bit later and stay a little bit later. So they're still working with that, they help with that supervision. But we'd make some combinations there, um, you know, once again, with the special bus. We would also have to find the safety code, which we're a little short on those two. So driver, safety code, so. Do you anyone looking for employment? We have those positions open.
We had a motion and we had a second. Um, all in favor of approving the bus routes?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item are the MSBA board policies, the twenty-twenty-five D updates.
Okay, these are the normal updates for, you know, one, J B two A, we talked about last month in the first meeting. We talked about four exchange seats. That got cut out in the update with some other changes lawyers are doing, so we will approve that next month also. We'll just include that in the first week in here. Um, but these are just the normal updates. The last two there, IKF and IKFA, dealing with graduation. Um, when you guys updated your policies last year, um, we missed how we had our early graduation, um, policy written in there. That was not, if you did not know from our old policies, our new policies. So those are your addendum here. I didn't have those until Friday, and since it's passed. But that would be what we used to prior to that update from the last year. So this is the first week. You got any questions on, ask in, uh, in a call and I try to find the links for it. Most of it's just right around the, I haven't really seen a major name. Most of it's just language changes or changes due to law or a court case. Lawyers got called and said, maybe we can change it a little bit.
I've got a quick question on that. Um, twenty-four credits. So basically we're telling you, no kid can graduate as junior. Is that correct?
We'll go back to it, well, there's a process, they can graduate. They just have to, there's two of them tonight, it's gonna be in closed session, we're gonna, you're gonna get. All right, so there is a process to go through, they still don't do it.
I've had a parent ask me, you know, if my kid doesn't retain and why?
Yeah.
Are we making, they feel felt like it was a, a punishment, but as a term or, you know, so I just.
Was that the early graduation one?
Um, well, yeah.
The IKFA?
IKF. It says they're agreeing over a minimum of seven semesters, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, that's, that's something I, I don't know if it's a board or you all, you want to look at. Um, I know we changed that several years ago that they had to write a, you know, write, write a letter and stuff, but there are a lot of kids that are juniors and they have all their credits and, I mean, maybe as a board we could talk about allowing them to graduate if others want to or something and.
I know people discussed this before and somebody brought up the money issue.
I mean, actually.
We're gonna be losing in half a year. So it's kind of a catch point. You know, you're glad that they're, they're getting all their stuff done and then, on the other hand, it's hanging cussing us a little bit on the other side.
Yeah. But nothing has to be decided, we're just.
That is, that is the first reading. And all this does is take these policies back to what they were before you updated in like spring and these got taken out because the MSBA didn't put those in there and it, and it, and it, by the way, that went. Um, so that's just thinking back to where it was. If you guys choose not to do that, we can do that too. We don't have to do that, that's just the wait for them for a long time here, I'm told. And, um, and they wanted that put back any place we did, so. That's how about you guys. You guys can talk about that and, um, but there is a process. They can write a letter, they can graduate after junior year. You know, you're gonna have that, you're ready to do that tonight. We've got a couple of, couple of students in closed session, but on that. Um, but that's kind of the, the, the last.
Yeah, any questions?
I was just thinking, you know, I don't know, through pretty stacked curriculum laws, but I think a way we could offer more, um, not just enrichment classes, but, um, highly level classes to keep our, our people here a little bit longer. If you make them, make them want to study longer because they can take those classes. I know that's highly sky curriculum stuff, but, um, I hate to say a school is that money.
I think that they just, right now, these college credits are so accessible.
Yeah.
To them, they get a lot of degree, a lot of college credits, new credits right now and, um, once they graduate, they can start to give their P E degree, finish something, once you reach college right away. Um, but, you know, I, I don't know how many kids it takes for everyone classes instead of college credit classes.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's something, I mean, we can look at that and see if they think out there areas that they improve upon and offer something. Um, but I think now it was, things have changed in the last ten, fifteen years. I wish kids are more focused on, I'm not, this is taking a class is not a company in the future. Taking a college credit class will hopefully be the future, so they're more geared towards doing that. Or they're in our vocational programs and not thinking about the college credit classes and, um, our vocational programs from the basis. I've been so impressed with the stuff we offer our kids here. Our kids are so lucky to not choose that, that a lot of kids are places on that. I've been really nice on that. I'm like, yeah, there's, there's an area where you can find something that students can take and look at. For those who just.
I don't think they'd panacea for all, all things have changed, but this is something to think about.
We talk about graduating as juniors. There are numerous schools that don't even have midterm graduations. Numerous, because of ABA and how much they would lose. I know Bowling Ridge is one, because probably twenty percent of their kids graduate early. And maybe they couldn't afford to hit on ABA.
Yeah, this is kind of too extraordinary. You got, you want to let kids graduate early, but it does, it hurts the school, but you want to move on. But at the same time, some kids are not ready to move on after junior year. Really, they need another year of maturity and guidance from home with the parents and coming to school and, and where they can be more successful to go off to college. You know, sometimes they graduate young, you know, it does lead to that. I mean, it's, but it's also a thing we decide to do, it's up to parents, if the child, if the child are ready for that. You know, I, I, I think just a lot of things in school, I like students, I like students to do those things, participate and, um, do those tough things, make those memories and make those friends. And, um, in addition to learning everything else you do. So a lot of things we offer our kids here, and I'd love to see you get to manage them and take part in. But I really think those things, those extracurriculars, activities, really help kids do better than the college, the workforce, the skills they learned, our activities, you know, are commensurate, you know, to really prepare them. So, you know, I'd like some kids to stay and do those things, also understand that some are ready and willing to do it. But I think right now we can allow that, they really choose to, they accept it, if they think about it and make sure it's what playing together. Um, but, you know, it's just, it's equally soon, they can argue in the way, what's best way to do it. And, and probably it's kid by kid. You know, it's good for one kid, might not be for another student.
Sure.
All right, the next thing is the internet safety and acceptable use policy.
This is a policy we have to have in order to get U rates. U rate is the money that we get and you pay yourself and, um, you pay a portion of those U rates. And it's probably well over a couple hundred thousand dollars. More than that, I can get some of your U rates. Um, that allows us to do infrastructures such as our access points to internet, those type of things. So we have got to, in order to get U rate money, we have got that internet safety plan in. And, um, Michelle worked with our tech department, her and Dawn worked together and put this together. And, um, and that, so this will meet the requirements for that. And another thing is something we need to have too also, so it's good to have, but also needs the U rate requirement. So really got to motivate you to do it. So that's one of the requirements that you can build in money, it's a lot of money that we need to get.
I'll make a motion to approve the internet safety and acceptable use policy.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The next item is the sick leave pool.
We have both certified and non-certificated sick leave pool information in there. We don't need any actual, just for your information. Um, certified sick leave pool are maybe strong with the amount of days available for staff to use. The non-certificated, a little lower, we did have staff, um, we did, the, the way the policy's written in the board, if the amount of days get too low, there can be a, um, required extra day donated. Those who are outside the pool for, are in the pool for five years no longer have to donate. That was a one-time thing last year. And then we did not ask for that this year, so we'll just continue to monitor that. We have had a few, um, requests already this year, but, um, it's really just for your information, it's just a question.
Um, the next item is declare surplus equipment.
We have some items that would like to declare, um, surplus and then request it or you can see the lists there. Um, if you, if we, just make the motion strong. If you have questions, the boom lift, we just purchased a good one, their enhancement grant. Uh, we have a, a, a alert cargo van, it's just not, um, needed anymore. And then, uh, two thousand and ten international school bus actually is disabled and need to go to scrap. But we do have to declare a surplus before we can do that. And then the rest is just H T T processing equipment that's no longer needed.
Do we have to read off each item?
I think, maybe the motion could just be made for including that thing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to declare a surplus and advertise for bids. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the next item, innovation campus equipment bids.
Okay, so there's several things to go through here, I think you want to, to do individually. Um, reference, advertise for bid on equipment for Innovation Campus, individual needs, operational programs. I'll kind of explain the individual ones. Um, first of all, we have the automotive list and, uh, the recommendation you made there is accept a bid in automotive technology. Okay, about the training they offered, the ongoing service they would offer. So they had a little bid and it's what he thought was the best based on what they had in the package.
I'll make a motion that we approve the automotive list bid.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Uh, next cabinet is for covenantology. Um, we worked with this, uh, daylight woodworking, um, I'm sorry, quarter custom woodworking for the vote bid. They decided to work for us on our building trade house and very happy with the product they have provided.
I'll make a motion, we approve the quarter custom woodworking.
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
All right, the next one's in, in the, for the well keep extraction. So this was originally listed as an alternate bid on the Innovation Campus budget project, uh, I'm sorry, um, Innovation Campus contract approval from Ben Hur. We had put a hold on it because they weren't satisfied with the overall setup of the bid. Uh, so Ben Hur and working with Peters, and they have an updated bid, which is a little higher than the original. But the original low bid, when they did the same specs that they have updated, was two hundred thousand dollars higher. So really, uh, that's coming from Ben Hur. Um, and then the three hundred sixty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine, that would be funded for the enhancement grant. Uh, the reason it's not quite, it's not seventy-five percent of that higher number is because it's only the materials and the labor costs can't be included in enhancement grant. So we would request an approval of the bid of seven hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars. Um, for Ben Hur with Peters.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Knowing nothing about welding, whether it's welder, I, I. Um, what is the perspective, um, life span of one of these machines?
Uh, that's a great question for Brent Meyer. I don't know the answer to that. Um, I know they have done a lot of work on this to make it more safe in, in general. So the way they claim it, they actually have individual actuatoriums on the food, which works off the fumes. They have set it up only today because you cannot dry aluminum and steel in the same place, that would cause combustion. So this is to prevent, um, combustion, blowing up, explosion, we're gonna say. So it's, it's a required, it's required to have an extraction system of some sort of place. And they really feel like they have done the research and this is the system that will do it. I mean, I cannot tell you if it's a ten to twenty-year system, I would have to get more information.
Oh, that's true. I think it's a lot of money, but I'm not sure.
We have to have it.
Yes.
Prevent it, maybe, that's what probably prolong the life or it's not prolonged, so it's probably hard to tell.
I will say, we sat down and looked at the budget today with that, uh, where we are with, um, the original budget, where we are with enhancement grant and with the contingency budget. And, um, this does not concern us, this dollar amount may be included, we're still above ten.
Frame rates?
Yes, frame.
I'm moving accept the bid.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then the next item, the bridge frame lift.
All right, also a bid in, in the bridge frame lift, uh, recommendation go with Don Henry Foster and Will Good. Uh, once he has some good information on trainings and all that, I believe, the, the, um, service to it. Um, that would be for welding for offloading supplies. And that one also will be included in enhancement grant, so we won't pay that entire cost, uh, part of that will be granted.
I'll make a motion and a second.
Second.
All, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ted, did you know if we will have more students, uh, in, uh, welding now?
Welding will have the room for double the amount of students.
I have, seven, five.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's.
Yeah, so I think it's, I think we have space. Then we recall a bid, twelve spots in the morning, twelve up there, and then we will have the capacity for twenty-four.
Yeah, that's great.
Um, the next item is patron comments per board policy, V V V H dash one. During the patron comment portion of the agenda, patrons may address the board on those items that are specific to the approved agenda or who have requested to appear before the Board of Education.
I know that we adjourned the regular meeting and call it closed session of the Board of Education. The writ convened at, uh, six thirty-five for the purpose of discussing legal actions involving the district hiring, firing, discipline of promoting employees, scholastic probation, expulsion or graduation of identifiable individuals including records of individual examination scores and individually identified personal records. Performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or, uh, applicants as provided by section six one zero point zero two one.
as provided by section six one, zero point zero two one, paragraphs one, three, six, and thirteen of the Missouri Revised Statutes. Those to be admitted to the closed session will be Richie Crack, Ted Sampson, Megan Carr, George Spaulding, and Amy Spaulding.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, now we need a roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye.